First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Collins, second by Mrs. Feather. Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Has it at six to zero, which is for the record, Mrs. Friedman is out tonight. We wish her well. Next up is the student government report. Do we have, yes, we do. Welcome. Thank you. Next order of business is the consent agenda. Item A is approval of minutes from the regular meeting from four fourteen twenty twenty-two, and the approval of minutes from the executive sessions from three twenty-four twenty twenty-two, and the executive session from four fourteen twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, six to zero. Next up is the personnel announcements, which Mrs. Dunkinson has informed me that there are none this evening. And next out would be the report of executive session meeting. Report out of executive session meeting from four twenty-eight twenty twenty-two. There are no votes to report out, and now we need a motion to seal the minutes from this meeting.
Motion to seal.
Second.
By Mrs. Feather, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, six to zero. Next up is the superintendent's report.
...of impact for Inand Hope for Cumberland schools. If you have any questions, you have.
So, thank you for letting us know the details there, and I know that when they estimate nine point seven students or ten students to... I'm just concerned that that's not going to be the reality, and I'm wondering whether or not there's any way that we can look at what recent developments, like the one that I'm very familiar with on Mendon Road, what that impact was with kids, like how many... Because they told us that there would not be any impact whatsoever with those, and I know that there is a lot of children, there are a lot of children there, which is not a bad thing, it's just it's going to, you know, continue to impact us, so.
I can certainly come back to that.
Thank you. Thanks, yeah, just because I think it might be a good indication.
You mean Cumberland Crossing?
No, I'm talking about the one in between Cumberland Crossing and Meadow Brook.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so Hunting Hill, I believe, I think it's Hunting Hill, I'm not sure. I think that's what, I'm not sure what the name is, but Cumberland Crossing also did give us, you know, to mention that, it did give us the same type of situation years and years ago, where there wasn't going to be an impact, and then, and now there are like thirty students or something like that. Thank you.
I just want to point out that in my ten years on the committee, ten years, eight years, whatever it is, I think this is the first time we've actually gotten this information from the town, so I'd like to say thank you to the mayor and to the council president. I have one question. According to Colliers and Collins, are we on track? It seems like we are.
We are on track, I actually heard some good news today, too.
But we can move into the building, but teachers can't be in there to set up classrooms at that first date. No, but that's good news. Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Next up is the reports of standing committees. First up is the fiscal management subcommittee update, Mr. Collins.
Good evening, the fiscal management subcommittee met this evening, we have six resolutions for your review. Mr. Brignano presented a budget forecast for the next, talking about a three-year plan to address some structural deficit we may have. One point that was brought up last week, I presented before the town council, it continues to be state aid attached with the school lunch program, so we're still, we're strongly, strongly encouraging families to apply. It is confidential, but what I failed to mention at that time, I should have mentioned, that is also how important the school lunch program is, not just because of the financial ramifications, but because many of these families have food insecurities, and it's hard to sit in a classroom and learn when your stomach's growling. We tell kids a lot of times before riot cussing, et cetera, to get a good night's sleep, get a good meal. That's easier said than done for some of our neighbors in Cumberland, so if you find yourself as a family who might be in the situation, please apply, the best thing, the worst thing that's gonna happen is they're gonna say no, it will be confidential. So it's very important, if you think your family can be helped, please, please apply. And then we obviously have six resolutions later, and, oh, the only other thing is Sedexo Food Services continues to have a record year because of the universal grab and grow, go breakfast and lunch options that they have, so one of the resolutions is, they're having a record surplus, so we, obviously, the money has to stay within Food Services, so we do have one resolution before the committee this evening that will be paid for with some of that surplus, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Policy and procedures did not meet this week, nor did achievement and communications. We hope that both meeting, both groups will be meeting in two weeks. And Mrs. Rogowski, did health and wellness meet?
No, they don't meet again in person until June.
All right, thank you. Next up is comments from the public. Would anyone like, from the public, like to comment? Seeing none, okay. Next up is old business. Mr. Collins, I will give this to you.
Yes, SCPR dash zero four twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two A was a resolution tableed last week. There was a question about a bubbler that had been vandalized. This resolution presented before the committee right now is for thirteen thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents. It removes that, question mark from last week, and this passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins moves passage of SCPR zero four dash twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two A. Do I hear a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes passes six to zero. Next up is discussion and our vote to approve the revised student attendance areas, boundary lines at JJM Cumberland Elementary School and Community School. Dr. Thornton.
Mr. Chair, I know last week we had some good discussion, we had some good public comment on the topic. We all know previously we have looked at the map, made some alterations. Tonight, I am recommending that you do vote on the new boundary with a caveat of holding the fifth graders harmless, and that they would find their own transportation, but they would be harmless to continue that community rationale being that we're moving two schools in two years. Also, if you were to approve this tonight, I would endeavor to keep the students together. If we had, say, eight students in grade two at Community, and they're now at Cumberland Hill, I would keep them in the same section at Cumberland Hill. So once again, I'm recommending you vote on the boundary tonight with that caveat.
Dr. Thornton has made his recommendation. Pleasure of the committee.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move passage of superintendent's recommendation.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve. Mr. DeMonica makes a second for discussion.
Dr. Thornton, do we have a rough idea how many children it will be that will get moved over to Cumberland Hill?
Chandler, remember, lovely eleven health homeless fifth graders.
Thirty-two, thirty-three, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I'll just, I'll just add, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mrs. Feather.
I was probably gonna say the same thing that you were going to say, which is, I'm thankful that we're able to hold harmless the fifth grade students, I think that's a good call.
Absolutely, and when we, I remember when we redistricted ten years ago, or eleven years ago, we did the same thing with students being grouped together so that they immediately had a network of people that they were familiar with, and I know that we had some really good, positive parent involvement, some of which are here tonight. I hope that this, although I'm sure you are disappointed that this is happening, I hope that this at least alleviates some of your fears and concerns, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes six to zero, sorry. Next up is new business, discussion and revoke to approve revised student attendance areas, boundary lines at Joseph L. McCourt Middle School and North Cumberland Middle School. Dr. Thornton. Okay. Dr. Thornton recommends us not voting, does anyone have a motion?
I have a question.
Doc, Mr. Collins.
What's the latest we could, if we were to redistrict, what's the latest that we could do it as a committee that won't impact busing?
Well, ring now, I did instruct Mr. Chandler, if you were not to vote to do this...
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, if I could add to the discussion part of this, while we may take the recommendation and not vote, we are here for discussion as well. I've been looking carefully at this, and I've been going over and certainly listening to a lot of the parents as well, and I did want to talk about two areas of the proposal that we will be looking at for change, and one of those is Little Pond County Road. I think we hit a point with Diamond Hill that we should stop, and it should be right before Little Pond County Road. That's a straight path, straight into North Cumberland Middle School, and we're splitting in between, so I do have a concern about that, and I'm not sure what the impact in the number of students would be, but I don't think it's a significant number that would affect this. The larger area, of course, is taking the whole Broadview neighborhood, and I would say that we should continue with everything through that broad view, and that the boundary maybe just be adjusted not to include Little Pond County Road in that neighborhood that is on Little Pond County Road, that probably would be closer to North Cumberland, and not interfere with busing to go down the other direction. The second one on that, too, that I'd like to mention is the neighborhood north of two ninety-five overpass in Mendon Road. I know that, I believe we've gone up and moved that somewhat through, is it through Dory? Right, west, sorry, and then the neighborhood behind Chops as well, and I'd like to get more information on the number of students that we would look at and how that would be anticipated, because I still think that they will still have a cumbersome commute over to McCourt, and I'm not sure if that's the right neighborhood to look at versus maybe looking at another neighborhood if we had to, closer to the McCourt School, and where we already have a change proposed, so. But I know that, yeah, Mrs. Feather and Mr. DeMonica put a lot of time into this, so I just wanted to bring it up as a discussion.
Yeah, and thank you to Mr. DeMonica and Mrs. Feather for putting in this time. Mrs. Feather?
And thank you, thank you, Ms. Smith. I think that, I definitely want to know what the numbers are and how those numbers would change, because I don't have them, unfortunately, in my head right now, but how the numbers would change, but I do, as much as it pains me, no, I'm just kidding, to say that our lines aren't perfect, no lines are perfect, and I do think that's what, yep, collaboration is good, and I think that your ideas are good. The one thing that I thought that, just to clarify, the Dory one, so it's past Dory, it's just to Westwood, I believe, right? So Westwood, and we're stopping before Chops, but I also agree, you know, that we need to take a look at the numbers. I know that we have a lot of children in, you know, in that area, so I want to make sure that it's not prohibitive to take that off, but I agree with you about Little Pond Country, and I always get that wrong, thank you, County, whatever. Anyway, that road that I almost get killed on every time I go on, that's the one, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. DeMonica?
You know, the school committee can look at different options, but if you pull from one, you have to add to another. As Dr. Thornton made a comment earlier, we're waiting for more numbers from the town, and in the Valley Breeze, I believe it's this week, they talked about homes off of Cogile, that area in town, Golden Gulch or something like that, where there's already a question of the four acres of land being, you know, clear cut, and we know we're gonna have more children from that neighborhood soon enough. We're gonna have children from the McNulty Project across from Domino's on Linden and that's twenty-five of, bedroom apartments, I believe, we have St. Patrick's, which is, I think, thirty-something apartments going in there. We have, if anyone believes the report that they submitted to the town from Inand Hope that we're gonna have nine point seven children, you know, they're just trying to pull the wool over our eyes, because we know for a fact that Cumberland Crossing, we have a lot more, we have that many just up at Highland Park in Cumberland by CVS, that those children will be moved over to Cumberland Hill, so there's a lot of moving items in this, but if the town, the town has to give us the information that we're looking for to make a reasonable decision that we only have to do once, not twice, not in three years when Inand Hope finally comes up online and, oops, sorry, all these two-bedroom apartments and one-plus dens, you know, we have all these children, where are we gonna send them? I mean, they're gonna go to BF, they're gonna go to Govan, and they're gonna go to McCourt, and so we need to get it, get it right. I'm in favor of moving lines, just we need to come up with a better plan of trying to reduce the amount of children that is going into North Cumberland Middle School, because all the growth, if you look at the maps that are on, online that we have, that whole blue area, it's where they're building the homes in Cumberland, they're not building them in the south part of town, they're not doing them at the library, that area is all closed off, so where are they building? North end of town, and we have to take that in consideration, you know, the seventy-nine million dollar barn that costs us a hundred and two, a hundred and three million dollars with the financing, we need to, you know, make sure we make that decision, which is best for the community. Granted, the parents, you know, have, they don't want us to go there, we bought north of two ninety-five, and that's the way it's gonna be, well, you know, all your other people in town are now building north of two ninety-five, and it's pushing the crowd further and further south, that we have to make the decision. You can't have the children up at North Cumberland Middle School at full classes, and then you get down to McCourt, and they're not full classes down there, there's no equity between the teachers and the students as well, and we know McCourt's a good school, it really is, you know, so I'm in favor, I can make change all day long, I'll look at any map that moves the children, but we have to be mindful of the fact that we can't please everyone to do what we need to do. We have to make that change. Thank you.
Anyone else? Would anyone like to make a motion to table this or to approve it in disregard Dr. Thornton?
Motion to table.
By Mrs. Feather, do I have a second? By Mrs. Rogowski, all in favor? Ayes. Motion to table passes six to zero, we will just table it to sometime in the future. I know Mr. Adams doesn't like, you know, open-ended tabling. Exactly. Thank you. Let's see, where are we? So, next up is the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two calendar for vote or discussion and or vote, making the last day of school June twenty-third. Dr. Thornton? That's pretty much it, you just articulated the change, we had two snow days, the last day's the twenty-third, last day's seniors, June ninth, I just need a vote for you to formalize the calendar.
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. DeMonica makes a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two calendar. Second by Mrs. Rogowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, six to zero. The calendar for twenty twenty-two is finalized. Next up is the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar with the addition of the Faculty Staff Orientation Day. Dr. Thornton? We just flipped the order based on feedback from folks in the district, put
putting the PD days first and faculty second. It was the reverse prior. So this is the wish of feedback from many.
All right, thank you. So, do I have a motion? By Mr. DeMonica. Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Motion is approved, six to zero, changing the 2022-2023 school calendar to flip the professional day. Or, I'm sorry, Staff Orientation Day. Next is the discussion and or vote to approve homeschool instruction requests. There are none this week. So we don't have to worry about that. Next up is, ah, it's the Dennis Collins Show. Mr. Collins, I will hand this to you.
Good evening. We have five remaining resolutions before I ask for the committee's approval. Are any of the five resolutions, is there anything anybody wants to pull out and make a comment on or discuss? I can tell you all five resolutions passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage to the full committee. I just want to point out also, one of them in particular has to do with graduation services, the audio available for June 10th. So seeing it in front of us makes us realize that graduation is right around the corner, is all I really want to say. So it's very exciting, the weather's getting warmer, and we're getting close to the end of the year. The seniors are itching, too. They don't care if the snow days are not, they're graduating June 10th. So I would move passage of the five resolutions to the full committee.
Okay, so Mr. Collins moves passage of SCPR-04-22-40, I'm sorry, 2022-44, SCPR-04-2022-45, Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye, Mrs. Feather. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion to pass all those resolutions passes six to zero. Thank you. And next up is the discussion and or vote to approve payment of bills.
No bills this evening.
Excellent. Next, executive session. Dr. Thornton, do we have anything left?
We do not.
I'm sorry, I skipped right over the school committee comments. I'm sure that was unintentional. Would anyone like to make any comments? Mr. DeMonica?
Just like to thank Dr. Masterson and Mr. Storm for coming in tonight and talking about the issues at McCourt Middle School. And if we could shut down social media, it'd be great, but it's not gonna happen. And I want parents to know that, you know, what we heard tonight, it's not as bad as you think it really is. It isn't. It's just a few people. And I think Dr. Masterson and his team, Dr. Thornton, and others that are working at McCourt are sorting out the issues and just, they want people to know every day, even though that a fight could happen, that learning is happening every day in that school, no matter what. And that these fights that do materialize are just not, you know, taken away from the rest of the school. So I just want to point that out and say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMonica. Anyone else? All right. Next up, Dr. Thornton, no executive dis-
We do not.
So, seeing as I'm here, somebody else will have to make a motion. Thank you, Mrs. Rogowski. Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye, we are adjourned at 7:47. Thank you.